Meeting for Thursday, March second. First item on the agenda. All those in favor? Should we pick them in order, Amy, or is there a preference between? Do you have a recommendation between? Continuation?
Whatever you like.
I'll start with the continuation for two thirty-six Maple Street. Is the applicant in person or through Zoom?
That's a good question.
I don't see.
Yeah, it doesn't look like.
Meeting is Martin. I know that they had all of their paperwork here yesterday as far as because they knew that they were on, so. Martin, are you part of two thirty-six?
Uh, yes, but just the RF part. Uh, I was in touch with the other people and they thought they had the right link, but. Uh, given there are only five participants and I'm one of them, uh, I'm thinking they're in some other Zoom section. I will go see if I can find them.
Can we, um?
Yeah, let's go.
Motion, let's take my water, take your.
Okay, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. Public area by nine Fairway Drive. All in favor? Thanks for coming on.
Thanks.
Could you, um, just walk us through, uh, exactly what you're hoping for?
Yeah, uh, basically, well, the plan originally was. My mom and dad were gonna move in together, um. When my dad passed away suddenly in February last year, um, so then it was kinda in limbo and then. After thinking about it, we decided we still wanted to move in, so. We're gonna, we were originally, we were probably gonna be like adding in addition for my dad, so could see at a garage or whatever. Now we're just gonna. Just redo the, the downstairs. Stay with us.
And in the downstairs, are you, you just walked through a little bit or?
Yeah, so I have a ranch, I have a ranch hu- uh, house. Uh, with a full walkout. Um, so basically the whole basement level, it's gonna be completely redone and. Um, gonna move the stairs from one side to the other, so that we don't have to like cut through. Her living space to get to the utility room. And she's gonna take over the whole downstairs.
There are pretty distinct bathrooms?
Well, there was, it was all gutted a couple of years ago. It was infested with, uh, termites. So, and, and also when they built the house, I'm pretty sure they built it in the winter because they. Loaded all the concrete up to the, the walls. So that all the partition walls were suspended. And if you, so when I pulled all the flooring, uh, the, uh. The partition walls out and everything, all the concrete is in different heights and. Each room and you can tell where. Some of the concrete didn't meet. Termites just came right up from underneath and devoured everything. Um, so everything is completely emptied out there right now. It was a bathroom down there, there was a kitchen. In the laundry room. A ho- a big living room and then two rooms.
Are you on? Will support the episode.
Yeah, cuz we only use two of the bedrooms upstairs. And we're only adding one in its zone for three, it's rated for three, excuse me.
In the bedroom, it would have, uh, it'd be egress compliant.
Yeah, so the downstairs, because it's a walkout, the back, the bedroom would be in the back and it's gonna, we're gonna put two. Double windows, cut them into the foundation. Um, on two different sides.
Um, I don't mean to be negative by any means cuz I applaud what you're doing. Um, it actually technically was still a four bedroom home though. Even though you're, you're not using it as a bedroom.
So he has to re-demise the space. So he has to, he's drawn, I believe you submitted a plan of the, uh. Sample of the.
Yes, yes, it says office.
He has to re-demise and submit it that way. And it has to be kept as a three bedroom unless they wanna do an upgrade with the subject.
I just don't want you to get. Get into it and find out, oh, it doesn't work.
He did his homework ahead of time before he made application. Uh, he did come down and see me and show me the drawings and I. You start, you know, showed him what he had to do.
You're comfortable?
Yep. I've been to his house before, he did work in the house before, so that's I. Recognize him from a previous project that he had, so we went over the stuff with him and, uh. Make it compliant, basically. And then parking, I mean, is, uh.
I mean, my driveway is pretty big, but at some point, I don't know if it's gonna be. Out of this project, but. Um, I considered putting a separate driveway in around the right side so that she has direct access to the back. She has her own entrance back there, but you'd have to walk currently. But we would like to add. Some type of, even if it's not like asphalt, just. Just around to the back of the.
So there's a way to get around.
Yeah.
How many cars can you park now when you get in the existing driveway?
I mean, I could, I, I, I fit six, but four on a daily, like, not a daily basis, but like, you know, it's wide. It's two cars deep and I can fit three wide.
And what is mom's name for the record?
Yeah, we did, we did, they was got lived there for the record. I was just gonna say that.
Kathy Lee.
And as described, it would just be you.
Just me.
Lower.
Yeah, but she's not paying, she's, she's gonna be. Putting the money into the, the remodel, but I'm not taking a rent or anything like that, it's completely, you know.
And not like you said, the staircase is gonna be.
Yeah, so, uh, right now I have a staircase, so basically if you look at the floor plan, um. It's directly in line with the front door. In the rear of the house. And it's a lousy staircase anyway cuz they actually had to like, uh, some of the, one of the joists out. And re-support it, like kinda headed off. So that you had a little headwork to be able to get down there, so it's kind of a tight turn. Cuz there's not enough space, but on the opposite side of the house, between my bedroom and my upstairs bathroom. Um, there's a closet and I'm, I'm gonna steal like that closet and part of my bedroom. And go down there and it's right next to the utility room, so that way. We have access to the utility room and she has access from downstairs.
And then, oh, sorry, one other question would be, um. So was, I mean, and you're adding like a little powder room down there, a little half bath, is that?
Of like a, yeah, so basically, um, cuz. We just wanna like a, basically just a toilet and a sink in it. Something real small, just so that if she has company over, they don't have, she can have her own access to her bathroom. It's not like a, you know. Doesn't, it's not something we have to do, obviously, but it was something if we could do, would be nice for her. So if she had company over, they don't have, like. They could use that little, little bath right there.
And Tim, that's not anything that behind this.
You can have as many bathrooms as you want, yeah.
So I bought that bedroom.
You're on subject.
No, I'm not sad.
Ray, do you have any questions?
No more questions.
Oh, uh, open the audience, I could catch what you're doing, yeah.
Yeah, I'll admit to the audience. If there's anyone that wants to be pick, just give their name and address. Motion of voting here. All those in favor? Okay.
Aren't your day?
My day? Uh, motion to grant the, uh, application as. As submitted.
The motion. All those in favor? Okay, that passes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Very much.
Obviously, yeah.
So what we'll do right now is, um, Jim and I will work on getting a decision drafted. Um, I'd like to, if we can get it, um, pretty much submitted to the town clerk either Monday or Tuesday, twenty day appeal period, and then after that, um.
A five year from it. So you gotta come back and.
Yep.
See this five years.
Yep.
And there's like, I'm right there, so you're all good?
Awesome. Okay.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Everybody, thanks.
It's alright to be alive.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we'll go back to.
Five minute update on the MBTA before the up, I'm just.
Are they still not?
Oh, actually, they might be. Logging on now. Oh, looks like perfect timing.
Gosh, I'm so sorry, guys, that was, uh.
No worries, we're good to go. Okay, super.
I just don't think, um, Dave can get on who did the actual balloon test, but, um. Was that an issue on my end or, or yours? I don't know, it's so weird.
I think you're good to go, Brian, if you just wanna explain, I know this is what our third meeting.
Yeah.
Um, so I think, or is it the site? Yeah, it's actually the third. Um, I think you did what the board had requested you to do and, um. You know, I don't think we need to go into too much explanation unless the board would like to, um, but.
Did anybody get a chance to go out there while the balloon was up, um, just?
Actually, I did, yes.
Okay.
You, um, you took the opportunity to do it, Chairman asked if we didn't go out there, so.
I would say that, uh, you, you had to wait for the wind to start to get an idea, like. You know, if you hung around long enough, you could see, you could get an idea.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was a little window, I know, below five miles per hour that, uh. We had to get out there, so we were trying to do it the day of, and I said, let's try to push till tomorrow cuz. I wanted to give you guys a little bit of notice, but. Um, so we, yeah, we did the balloon test, we did some more. Simulation, as you can see the balloon in relation to the new. Um. Extension and we, uh, did some plots that are pretty. Self-explanatory, the green is. Um. In-home coverage, orange is, uh. Out of your house coverage, I'm pretty sure, I don't wanna speak for Martin, but, and, uh. It kinda connects those two, those three sites, um, to one another, so. I'm all for questions, hopefully I can get, um, if there's anything about the balloon test, I can get him. On, but I know Martin, who produced, um, RF plots is on as well, so.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I cannot, um, vote on this, cuz I missed the last meeting. Um, but I do have my own opinion. Be a board member or resident, either way you wanna take it. Um, I've actually paid attention to the site in the past three, four weeks. And amazingly. If you were heading north on Maple Street, you cannot see the tower. You head south on Maple Street, you just about catch it. It's the exact opposite on four ninety-five. You can only see it going north and can't see it coming south.
Yeah.
And that was what actually blew my, that was what the balloon up to. It's just, I, my personal opinion is, I don't have an issue with. I would down and saw the balloon, I drove by while the balloon was up. Being from the resident of our board, I have no issue, but I cannot vote on it tonight.
Okay. Pretty good job, especially with having the new views. Seeing the balloon and then seeing the three D model together, I feel like that also gives a nice perspective. Um, from, from all the angle, that does not seem being. Intrusive on views, uh, also from the neighborhood, the closest neighborhood, you can't even, can barely see it. You can't even see it, and, uh, overall, I haven't had an issue. Uh, given that extension of length. If it was, if it was a bit more, then I could see it, you know, if it was another twenty feet, I could.
Looking up the balloon. Really told me nothing. That's why I drove. And you can see when you come south on Maple Street.
Right.
A little bit, but we got the foliage now, right now either.
That's true, you can see more.
You can see more of it, but it wasn't. I don't, I don't, I don't think five years from now I drive down the road, oh my God, look, that's all gone now.
Right. No.
No, yeah, I mean, I think that, um, the applicant with Brian, yeah, we appreciate that. I know last time you weren't thrilled to kinda do the balloon test, but we do appreciate you going to those steps and. Hearing the board, that at least, um. Be amenable to.
Notes.
But, um, yeah, I don't know, myself, I feel like, I don't think. It doesn't bother me, I think I just have more of the sense of, if it's setting a precedent, that once you do it. And I know, I would be interested in that Brian's take on this, that it's kinda like, cuz it's already above what, what the, the bylaw states. It kinda goes up, it's already above that and it's going above that.
I think it's important to also reference the letter that was sent on February third. And I think that there's some language in there that. That you should read just as far as what the FCC requires for this thing, that it's very hard to deny these. So just, just for what it's worth. Yeah, and there is a letter that everybody would read. With however the board goes.
I mean, I think I'm inclined to. I mean, I. I. Don't have a problem with it, I guess just part of me is kinda like, if another, you, you know, worry that is it gonna be an ongoing? The next one's gonna come down the line and I've been a lot. Yeah.
I got a question if I may, and let, are you there something, Brian? I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, just on the coverage, is the, yeah, I think the last two pages was on the coverage, could you just go over that a little bit?
Yeah, I'm gonna let, um, Martin speak. To that, I, I didn't prepare those, I'm just familiar with them from doing a bunch of hearings. Martin, you're on mute.
Excuse me, so Martin, I have a C squared systems, let me share a screen. Host has disabled, okay, um. I guess I can describe them to you, uh, basically, the first plot shows the. Um, in-building coverage in green, the in-vehicle coverage in orange, uh, that's. Two different signal thresholds, uh, in the area around. The proposed site. And you can see there's, there's a fairly significant gap there right on four ninety-five, and the second plot. Uh, shows how we fill in that coverage, we get continuous coverage on four ninety-five and reach into some of the neighborhoods around. Uh, so I think the site's very well placed in among those other sites to, um, give us good coverage there, um. I could describe more details, but. Uh, that's just, it portrays that, um, area that we fill in.
And they have a copy too, they have a.
Okay.
And I have a little trouble, uh, uh, hearing you there, but I'm, I'm, I'm assuming what you said is that the, uh, oh, the green is. The, uh, the new cup, it's a coverage that will be available on the. Already existing.
Uh.
And what is the orange?
Uh, the existing coverage plot, the first one is the current coverage at the green, which is. In-building and the orange, which is in-vehicle coverage, uh, for Verizon, so that's the first plot is what. The way things are right now.
Yeah.
In the second plot, uh, we've added in the, uh, proposed site. And it fills in that space rather well between the two, uh, the Jasons, the, the coverage of the adjacent sites along four ninety-five. Uh, again, green is still, uh, in-building and orange is in-vehicle.
I'm curious, why, right around the, uh, the site itself, there's no coverage?
Um.
In the existing?
Oh, in the existing, uh, just the limitations of terrain and, um, ground clutter, the height of the sites around it. Um, that's. Just limits the amount of coverage they can give. Um, that's, you know, why the gap is there, um, it's, it's a matter of foliage and terrain primarily. And, um, this site is just right in the middle of the gap that's remaining, which is the most efficient place to be in terms of coverage. Uh, and, and fills in that space.
Apart, um, so it, it's not covering that because. And is this, uh, with, uh, when things are. Are in. In foliage or when, uh, now when there is regional foliage out there?
Uh, this would be in foliage, we plan for a worst case of coverage in, in spring and summertime when the foliage is out.
And what's the distance, how far would these things cover?
Uh, in this case, it covers an, uh. A diameter of coverage is around a mile or so, a little more than that, maybe a mile and a quarter, uh, similar to. This site above it with this.
There is the scale.
Yeah. It's the MA thirteen thirteen above it, it's a similar amount of coverage to that.
And, and you have to understand, each site's different depending on the height and, and the terrain, but.
Yeah.
Yep. That's interesting, that it all covers a, a mild diameter. A diameter or a radius?
Uh, the diameter is about. A mile and a quarter, a mile and a half, yeah.
I thought it would reach up, reach more personally.
Yeah, me too.
But then the second, I mean, on the proposed, you could see, I mean, it's not relevant to that, but there's still big.
But I, I was supposed to get coverage, but not the kinda coverage you, you're really looking. Right, cuz that's not a sleek dead zone for Verizon AT&T.
Is that, is that true with, on the white area, does that, you still have coverage in the white area or no?
Uh, there's not reliable coverage, um. When we did voice, there was sort of, you were in or you were out, you were, you could make a call or you couldn't, uh, in data, it's just. Uh, once you get outside that in-vehicle area, your coverage will slow down a great deal. As though you're rolling off a cliff precisely, but these are the two, um. Coverage levels that, uh, AT&T designs to.
Thank you, it's, it's actually interesting because. I do run AT&T phone and I do drop it. On Maple Street quite a bit.
So this is, yeah.
It does rock.
Matches your experience.
It works.
Thank you for providing the detail.
Any other questions, Brian?
No, I, I, it was, it was helpful to see the balloon, I appreciate that, the fear and scale. I mean, I, I agree with you that it's.
I think.
Relative.
Not more detriment zone, what's there.
There's actually one. No, for the south of four ninety-five.
Exactly, going north. You can see it, it's right there. It's right next to the highway.
I actually thought it was this tower coming up at first, yeah.
And you, so it's also a double decker as well. That, that one is right up. Way larger than what this would. The president, presidents.
Still lower than the multiple.
I'll move to close the public.
Do we open it up to the audience?
Oh, that's correct, yeah, I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone not speak on this, just name an address? Hey, Brian, go. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I do have one question, Mr. Chairman. Do we have wars to provoke?
Yep.
That's okay, we'll be sure.
Alright, June night.
Uh, motion to, uh, grant the, uh, the permit as applied.
Yeah, discussion.
I feel a lot like everybody with a discussion that, uh, it's not gonna be. That much of a deterrent to what is already there. It does provide additional coverage. Uh, although I agree with you guys that, uh, I prefer not to have the height, but. I think, uh, if we got to. Uh, the need of the public.
Yes, necessary.
Yeah. I agree.
All those in favor? Hi. Yeah, that passes. Alright.
Great.
Thanks, guys.
Your work, gentlemen.
Thank you so much, I'm just, sorry, sorry I couldn't be there, but, uh, it's good to see people in person, so thanks.
Not a problem.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
I do have a question, I know Brian's a usual presentation on this, we're still open. How are we in MBTA community?
That's what Jim's gonna explain.
Don't spoil it for me, Peter.
No, everybody should have the, the packet. Some information on, um. What we're required to do now.
Yeah, I thought it would be, cuz I.
Yeah, I know you would want.
Yeah.
I'd ask Jim if.
Who's what, seven thirty-five?
We can, we can get this done. Alright, so, uh, MBTA community, so this is a new law that's in place. So under Mass General Law forty-eight, three A, so Mass General Law forty A is what we always reference back for zoning, so special permits are. Forty-eight, nine, variances forty-eight, eleven, uh, and this is now forty-eight, three A, because three was already taken, but three A. Uh, talks about, uh, multi-family zoning districts. Uh, for all MBTA communities, and yes, Bellingham has defined through this law is. An MBTA community, they're actually an MBTA community adjacent community. So we are a community that is adjacent to a community that has a commuter rail station. So Franklin has their commuter rail station, we're adjacent to it. Every community that, uh, falls in that boat is also, uh, having to, um, adhere to this. Uh, new law, so, um, you know, Franklin has different stands, some slightly higher standards than we do. Because we're an adjacent community, uh, so I'll go run through this quickly, just broad overview. Uh, an MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance. Uh, or bylaw that provides at least one district of reasonable size, and I'll go over what reasonable size is defined. As in which multi-family housing is permitted as of right, so we can't stipulate any special permits, it can't be. Uh, restricted to, to seniors, uh, none, none of that, it has to be as of right. Provided, however, that such multi-family housing shall be with, uh, without age restriction and shall be suitable for families with children. For the purposes of this section, a district of reasonable size shall have a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre. And subject to any further limitations imposed by chapter forty-eight, one thirty-one, which is environmental code and stuff. And be located not more than point five miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal. Or bus station if applicable, so that, that last line actually got amended in October. Um, because an adjacent commu- we're in an adjacent community, we made the argument, or all, pretty much all the adjacent communities made the argument that. Um, a lot of us aren't within point five miles of a commuter rail station. So they essentially struck that for adjacent communities, so we are now bound by the location. But we still have to have, um, a re- a district of reasonable size that can account for fifteen units per acre. And then that reasonable size was later defined per community. Uh, and so as an adjacent community with no, uh, rail station. Uh, within a point five miles, we, uh, are required. To have at least one district, it can be multiple districts, but at least one district, multi-family of seven hundred and fifty units. Uh, so that is, um. That is, uh, fifty acres, uh, at fifteen units per acre, that equals the. Uh, seven hundred and fifty, uh, units that must be zoned for. Uh, in the town of Bellingham, so there's many different ways you can get creative about how, uh, you do that. Um, but, uh, as of right now, the state is requiring a interim action plan, and so. We have filed our interim action plan that kinda puts a bookmark in there that says. We're looking at it, we're gonna do it, uh, and we'll get back to you. Um, so how we laid it out is, and I think you got received notice that, uh. The select board is looking for s- some individuals to participate. Uh, we're looking at setting up a subcommittee that would, uh, likely start in the new year, so January one. And, uh, you know, develop, uh, some outreach strategies and identify some key locations in which we could. Uh, target this zoning district, ultimately, at the end of the day, uh, zoning needs to be adopted. Uh, by the end of twenty twenty-four, uh, so we're looking at town meeting of, in November of twenty twenty-four to put forward. Some district that's re- of reasonable size that meets the requirements that the state has identified. Um. By not doing it, as of right now, there are several, um, financial. Uh, uh, opportunities that they, the state has stated they will remove, uh, and you'll no longer be eligible. Things like Mass Works, all, all the different grants that we have, uh, utilized in the past. Uh, and I would imagine it's probably just gonna get. Uh, further, uh, furthered in terms of things you, you will not be eligible for. Uh, if you don't adhere to this, uh, one community has. Uh, stated they wouldn't, uh, contribute, and so we're gonna see what the, the, the example is set for them and, uh. Go from there, but, uh, essentially, you know, we have, we have some time, uh, there has been certainly a number of. Uh, property owners looking to be included in this, uh, as you would imagine, and, um. And so, you know, but I think what the select board has, uh, recommended is we take our time. Uh, look at it thoroughly and, uh, and lay out, uh, a plan, uh, and target that twenty twenty-four. uh, look at it thoroughly and uh, and lay out a, a plan, uh, and target that twenty twenty-four November town meeting. So happy to answer any questions.
Jim, did, did you say a, a minimum of fifteen units?
Fifteen units per acre, uh, so that is.
Minimum?
That's a minimum, yes, so that is significantly denser than anything we've seen here in Bellingham. Uh, you know, Curtis Apartments probably about half that. Uh, so we're.
Yeah.
Can we, can we include, can we include Curtis Apartments or no?
No, so it has to be a reasonable, a district of reasonable size that can be developed. So you can get creative though, like for instance, uh, Franklin's looking at their downtown and saying they meet, that area meets the, the requirements, because you could build, technically, you can build, I believe it's four stories, and they don't have any restrictions on number of units. Uh, so right on their main street, they technically some, that landowner could technically build up and adhere to it. Uh, so, you know, we, I think there are some opportunities to get creative and uh, look at locations that might have the least impact on, on the community.
Because I guess, yeah, what I would wonder with this is that I would think that would it practically speak and kind of turn into where which I get, they're looking for dense, they're looking for housing density next to the MBGA. Is it gonna materialize into like a double the size of the, the Curtis or Westerly giant development?
Yeah, it has to be fifty acres.
Yeah. And that's most likely, unless like you're saying, I guess there's ways we can be creative about it, but eventually. But.
Right on the Frankel line. Egress only here Franklin.
And then like arts question, yeah, the forty, the, the other developments still.
Yeah, so is there a way that you can make Curtis uh, uh, out or no?
No, no, we've actually had some discussions about that, not, uh, current and uh, developments would not uh, adhere to it, not only because it's already developed, but also there's been, there's several limitations on that development that came through as a comprehensive permit, the twenty-five percent affordability to it. Uh, so it wasn't a buy right development either. Uh, so even if we were able to somehow retroactively uh, look at it. Um, you know, they, they went through a different process than a buy right process.
So would, would this have to be a um, a affordable housing project or just?
No, no, actually, the, the contrary, they want it to be uh, no stipulations, that while we do have inclusionary housing on, on our books uh, that they can, they do need to adhere to. Uh, but no, there, the, the requirement is buy right only, so no, no, no affordable components to this.
So it has to be an undeveloped land that is continuous, does, does the shape matter at all?
Uh, it doesn't have to be contiguous, so then you could look at multiple districts, uh, and, and it doesn't have to be completely undeveloped either. You could look at uh, uh, there's probably some uh, some larger properties that are partially developed or underdeveloped that you could uh, consider as well.
So we can't use Curtis Apartments, but we can use something that's already developed?
Yeah, so like, for, for instance, for instance, if, if you, let's say Curtis Apartments was developed as a two-story structure. And you said, okay, we could do it as a four-story structure, uh, you know, that, that potentially could, could be considered. Uh, likewise, there's other locations, I am thinking you know, retail that uh, is one story, that you might be able to consider adding, you know, top of shop type stuff to. Uh, that, that type of stuff.
And this, like you said, Jim, I mean, at this point, the town is putting the committee together that will look into this and that, but I thought for the board, like, it's good to know, because.
I mean, if you look at yeah, hundred fifty units, two kids, three kids. What a bird is going to run out of school system. They saw fire.
Yeah.
This, this.
Mr. Salteri has volunteered himself towards the committee too, so.
Yes, Quentin, and there, there's no way to uh, hook them with a special permit at all, in some other way?
Specifically by right, it states it straight in the, in the law, by right, uh, no special permit, no variance. Uh, wh- I will say, you know, the our boards have done a good job though of getting certain mitigations, uh, even if it is by right, because by rights for Bellingham is development plan uh, review. Uh, so, I mean, we could certainly look at uh, opportunities to mitigate, uh, but yeah, it's, it's not a special permit, it's not any, anything of that nature.
That's, yeah.
Hey, Jim, I, I missed the beginning of your presentation, but I know you and I talked about the limitations that we have um, in the Charles River Water Bay uh, shed area, north of everything, north of Blackstone Street, we, we don't have sewer capacity, so those types of limitations, we don't have to take that into account when we're identifying properties, it's up to the developer to figure it out, is that right?
Right, so I mean, um, ultimately, it's gonna come down to when the state reviews our districts, but that, that is not stated in the, in the law that we need to consider those types of things, uh. We need, do need to consider things like wetlands, uh, so we're talking about upland uh, available for development. But yes, I mean, if uh, if we don't have water or sewer, uh, the developer would need to look at other o- opportunities.
Yes, that is gonna be a major challenge, not to say that they can't do onsite job, um, the Jefferson, when they were in, originally uh, developed, it was with onsite treatment, since time they have tied into the town sewer system, so there are solutions to it, but obviously they're costly.
Did you say it has to be within the mile and a half of the uh?
It, it does not, not for adjacent communities, because I think they recognize that you know, it doesn't quite meet the intent of the law, if we're, we're putting it of, bu- uh, well above uh, a half a mile from any commuter rail, so they gave the adjacent communities that flexibility, at least to, to look elsewhere. And again, I mean, I, I know a lot of us, a lot of the development is, is thought looking at uh, uh, north, you know, north of town, there also is a bus service south of town too, that we could, we could discuss uh, also, so I mean, there's, there's a number of opportunities that we could look at it in a creative way, and I think once we get that subcommittee together and start looking at all the different alternatives, um, I think we can come up with something that meets the letter of the law.
Yeah, with this, I mean, I thought it was good just to get it to the board, so that everyone's aware of it, and then if you wanna get involved, obviously, just reach out to Amy or Jim. Because I, I mean, the, the committee, Jim, I believe is, it's gonna be representatives from each of the boards, but I'm sure there's other ways, if you wanna get involved, you can reach out to Jim or Amy.
Oh yeah, I'm, I'm sure, and also just so, if you guys are interested, I believe it's Middleborough that has decided not to afford with the uh, with the law, so we'll see how uh, the state reacts to that.
Yeah, if I read the article right, they um, they said we don't care about the state money.
Don't, don't, don't say that to Dennis, I think he likes.
I said that's what Middleborough said, not telling you. You gotta find some middle ground here.
Yeah. Alright.
Yeah, next one.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Why are you gotta do it?
Oh, most of the chapter minutes.
Second motion. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. What's gonna close your hearing?
Well, wait one minute.
What? Oh, we got more.
You know, I'm being a great friend. You um, have lived this board for many, many years. We've all learned from you, present and past. You know, it's gonna be sad. Your wisdom you brought to the board is incredible. Thank you very much, thank you.
It's my pleasure to serve.
Board to you?
This is uh, very unexpected.
Like this, a Christmas film?
Wow, that's nice.
Has somebody else's name on it?
I didn't spell my name right. That's very nice.
Great, let's see.
This is read, it says presented to our thorough preparation and grateful appreciation for years of service to the town of Bellingham and zoning board of appeals. Thank you very much.
You have any idea how long this has been? What was the? You know, whenever you put years of service, you know, it's been a long, long time. Twenty years, twenty-three years. Were, were you on the board in the eighties? Because we were checking the town clerk's record and only went back, I thought you were there, I've been here since eighty-seven, I thought you were on the board when I came here. But uh.
Yeah, I moved into my house in eighty-eight, it was after that, it was, it was either eighty-nine or nine, somewhere around there.
Right up there with the, the longest serving uh, on any board, Cliff Matthews, of course, goes to eighty-four, but you're, you're a close second, I, I think, I don't know if there's anybody that's been serving longer than Art. Yeah, oh yeah.
It's about time for me to go, isn't it? Was it called the zoning board back then?
You can only find records back to the early nineties, and I'm sure it was the eighties, but, you know. Uh, yeah.
Yeah. That's awesome.
I, you, you are, you're one of the rare few people that um, I haven't found anyone to say anything bad about, you know, I mean, like.
Uh-huh.
And it's rare, so, and thank you for it.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Always a gentleman.
Thank you, thank you very much, everybody.
You're gonna be watching from home.
I know, I know.
I'll wait for you to call and remind him, by the way, it's Thursday.
Watch it, they're on all.
Watch it online.
It wasn't an easy decision, by the way, to uh, to leave the board, because you know, it kind of becomes I don't know, maybe something that I, I felt that I felt that I, I needed to do it, that it was a duty, and then on the other hand, I thought that maybe, you know, just doing this as, as a force of habit, so I thought it was good to let someone else have the a chance to serve in the board, and I hope they can appreciate it much as I have. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Haven't changed a bit in thirty years.
I know, I just got. Thank you.
Try and keep it going, well, that one.
Hi, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Bye, guys. Thank you for everything over the years.
Thank you, Jim.